Read the statement of compliance.
In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, public law nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. Notice that this meeting has been properly advertised in the Daily Record and Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate location and a copy has been filed with the Paquonic Township Clerk.
Thank you. Please call the board.
Mr. Blumer?
Here.
Mr. Cerisi?
Here.
Mrs. Dempsey is absent. Mrs. Zizito?
Here.
Mr. Getton?
Here.
Mr. McSweeney?
Here.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mr. Senic?
Here.
And Mrs. Shenton is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Eleven, please stand for the flag, so.
Do the flag of the United States of America. The Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November eighteenth regular business meeting. Tonight, we have a special meeting planned as the board will formally thank the Veterans Wall Committee and the contractors and vendors that made that project a reality. Yesterday, right outside, a ceremony was held to dedicate the project in front of a crowd of hundreds from our community and beyond. Personally, it was the greatest experience I've ever had being on the Board of Education. It was like something out of a movie, complete with helicopters, bagpipes, army jeeps, and Humvees. It is undeniable, this project is special, and I was honored and humbled to be a small part of it. Tonight, in attendance, we have members of the committee, including the driving force behind it, Ms. Colleen McMahon and Mr. Dave Cole. Additionally, we have many of the contractors that worked on the wall, including Don Semerero of Frank Semerero Construction, Larry Steimel of L.A. Design and Construction, Steve Cunningham from Steve Cunningham Electric, Jim Spano from Spano and Sons General Contracting, Ben Grace from B&amp;B Sustainable Landscaping and Irrigation, Pedal Grimbalis from Passay County Welders, Dimitro Carbon from Morris Bergen Irrigation, Elvis Vucinovic from Green Nature Landscape Design, Vincentello from Freedom Fence, and Frank Messineau from Solutions Architecture. You all went above and beyond for this project. And that's coming from someone that works in the industry and speaks from experience. And you all deserve every bit of praise that has been directed your way during the project yesterday and right now. The project would not have been built without you. And therefore, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to formally say thank you and job well done. Next, we will honor the PV Girls Soccer Team for winning the Morris County Championship and individual athletes from PV Cross Country Team that won county championships as well. The sports programs at PV are thriving, and it's fantastic to see. Congratulations to you all and great job. Uh, next, as we had previously announced, we will be dedicating the main gym in honor of Ruth Kellett on twelve nineteen. It will be another great night for Paquonic, and I encourage everyone to attend. Last, the board will receive our annual audit presentation tonight from our district accounting firm. While this is not as exciting as the other presentations to anyone other than Mr. Gibbs, it is necessary and demonstrates how well Mr. Gibbs runs our finances. So thank you to Mr. Gibbs. And with that, I'll place the mic, pass the mic to Dr. Portis.
Thank you, Mr. Senic. Uh, we're going to lead off with our student representative report, which is presented tonight by the Zegler Sisters, who stepped in on late notice, but I'm sure will do so fantastically. Ladies, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So nice to see you all again. The fall sports season has officially drawn to a close. Congratulations to all the sport teams in the marching band on a truly remarkable season. The marching band finished third in the Group Three Open Championships at MetLife Stadium two weeks ago. Thank you to all the seniors for your dedication to your programs. The winter season will be starting up on Monday before Thanksgiving. Good luck to our winter athletes. Last Thursday, the Brooklyn Nets wheelchair basketball team came to the school to let students try out the wheelchairs for the basketball game this Thursday, come out to support. On Friday, Mrs. Lapari's fashion and merchandising class got to hear from a representative from Ralph Lauren. It was a great opportunity for the students to learn about the fashion industry. Emily will finish the rest.
Good evening. Mr. Hazler met with the class officers this past week to discuss the upcoming events for December and continued the feedback on the schedule. PTHS had a series of fundraisers to benefit the community over the past several weeks. The Interact Club is gathering backpacks filled with supplies for the homeless. Habitat for Humanity is organizing a food drive for our local food pantry, and the Robotics Club has been gathering supplies to assist firefighters who are battling fires in Pompton Lakes and West Milford. PTHS would also like to thank all the kind donors and community members and businesses who contributed to the completion of the Veterans Wall. It is a wonderful way to honor our veterans who dedicated their lives in service to our country. Thank you for ti- uh, for, thank you for your time and have a great rest of your night.
Pretty good. You got a round of applause. Nicely done. I just have a few quick, um, up- updates for my report. Actually, not really updates, but just things to report um, before we move on to the recognitions for athletics. Mr. Senic brought it up, I believe, that, no, actually, the girls brought it up, that on November twenty-first, we'll be hosting the wheelchair basketball event here. Um, I am by nature a very competitive person, but, but I've been advised that we will lose by quite a bit. Uh, but it'll be a lot of fun and it's a great fundraiser. I'm excited, too, that the gym will be named on December nineteenth. We'll be pushing out more information about that. Um, over the past couple of weeks, we were able to celebrate beautiful Veterans Day events at both PV in the morning and SJG with their Veterans Day concert in the afternoon. On Friday this past week, I filmed a podcast with Dr. Johnson from Butler. He's superintendent of schools up there, and we focused on the topic of student attendance. Uh, we should be pushing that out Friday, and hopefully it came out really well. It's the first time I've done a podcast with somebody taller than I am as well. He's about six-five, so that was noteworthy. Yeah, he's a big guy. He's a really good guy, too. Um, we're getting feedback from students, staff, and families on the surveys we sent out to get some generalized initial feedback on possible impacts to the new schedules, including start time at the high school, and just see how things have gone in the first quarter of the year at both PV and PTHS. I appreciate the input and look forward to applying, um, what we receive in our analysis of the effectiveness of the changes. Um, we're also going to be surveying the community on, um, for the input on the conference schedule pilot we had this year for the elementary schools. I'll speak more about it during the recognitions portions of the meeting, but wanted to mention that we celebrated the Veterans Wall dedication yesterday at the high school. It was a beautiful event that I would guess was probably estimated by about five hundred people, and truly added meaning of something I already felt was incredibly meaningful. Yesterday was the first time I've ever gotten chills while addressing a crowd, true story. And I was so moved by the event that I actually called my wife on my drive to the castle, um, which was where we had the reception. It's a very short drive, but I had to tell her, couldn't wait till I got home, that I was pretty sure I'd just taken part in the single greatest school event of my career. So for what you said about as a board member, it's my twenty-eighth year as an educator, and I think that was, that was tops. Um, looking ahead to next week, school district will close early on Wednesday, November twenty-seventh, um, and then remain closed on Thursday and Friday for the best holiday ever. And then we'll look to welcome everybody back on December second. And just a quick personal note, I just want to extend sincere gratitude for my family, for the support so many people in this community have shown for our Ithaca bomber. My son Danny, who played his last football game of his career on Saturday, did not end as we hoped, as is the case with most things in life, but it was a wonderful experience for my family. And I just want to say that we really appreciate how many supporters in the school community would ask how he was doing, and even tonight, people were asking about it as well. Really means a lot, and so I just want to thank you for that. And I guess that's a pretty good segue to athletics, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Silipina, who will lead the way with the athletic recognitions.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Portis and Board of Education, for allowing me to take play, take part in tonight's meeting. Uh, tonight, we're here to celebrate outstanding achievements that took place in two of our PV programs. First, I'd like to recognize two outstanding student athletes at PV that broke records and made history for our cross-country team. I'd like to call up Coach Dan Green at this time to present their certificates.
Good evening. I would like to thank the Board of Education for recognizing Matt Sherburne and Rose McBurney on their first-place finishes at our county meet. At the county championship, each school sends out their fastest seven boys and fastest seven girls to compete in the last race of the year. To have the first-place finisher for both the boys' and girls' race is very rare. It's very special and is no small feat. In the boys' race, Matt took first place out of sixty-eight runners. Also, Matt's time of ten minutes and thirteen seconds set a new school record for the fastest Paquonic time at a county meet. Congratulations, Matt. In the girls' meet, Rose took first place out of fifty-nine runners. Um, Rose finished with a time of ten minutes and fifty-eight seconds, which was a good twenty to thirty seconds ahead of the second-place finisher. Congratulations, Rose. Matt and Rose both ran cross-country for all three years at PV. They were captains this year and played a large role in the success of our program over the years. Matt and Rose have consistently been top finishers, and all their efforts are greatly appreciated. I encourage both of you to continue being great students, being great people, and of course, great athletes. You represent our school district well, and we are so proud of you. Once again, congratulations, Matthew Sherburne and Rose McBurney.
Thank you, Coach Green. Next, I'd like to recognize the PV Girls Soccer Team for winning the county championship for only the third time in school history. Please welcome Coach Rogers to present her team with certificates.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Portis. My name is Coach Rogers, and I would like to start by saying thank you to Dr. Portis and the board for recognizing the PV Girls Soccer Team tonight. I would also like to thank those that have helped myself and the girls reach this amazing goal, including the players and the families, Mr. Sebarowski, Coach Zumo, Assistant Coaches Mr. Slaff, Mr. Sika, and Mr. Kay, as well as Mr. Silipina and Mrs. Tabakman for setting up the games and buses and for all their support throughout the season. Lastly, I would like to thank the Parks and Recs Program, Janitors, and Grounds Crew for always making sure that the locker rooms and fields were tip-top shape and ready for play. I stand before you today with immense pride and admiration for these incredible group of young athletes. Our girls' soccer team has truly had an amazing season, one that will be remembered for years to come. With an undefeated record of thirteen zero to one, they have shown what it means to play with heart, determination, and relentless effort. Throughout the season, these athletes gave everything they had on the field, in practice, and every moment of the game. They play with passion, unity, and spirit of sportsmanship that has been nothing short of inspiring. The energy, commitment, and drive they have brought to every match is a testament to their hard work and belief in each other. It has been a complete honor to work with them, with such talented and dedicated girls, and I've watched them grow not only as players, but as leaders, teammates, and individuals. Their dedication to excellence and to one another has made the season unforgettable. I couldn't be prouder of everything that you've accomplished, and let's take a moment to celebrate your amazing seasons. You've earned it, girls. We have our captain, Elena D'Amico. Our captain, Stellan Hagen. Our captain, Jenna Lisa. Our manager, who's not able to make it here tonight, Alessandra Bancero. Courtney Albert. Olivia Ann Albert. Catherine Nello, who is also, oh, you made it. Perfect, Catherine. Gia Arenna. Kenza Asil. I know. She is also out. Beatrice Burzen, who also is out today. Gabriella Bretticore. Anna Bonafonte. Alana Brown. Gwen Cannon. Elizabeth Cook. Emma Throbick. Vanessa Inusov. Leticia Gutierrez. Lindsay Hubner. Isabella Legas. Devin O'Connor. Annabelle Pacio. Allison Pomeroy. Alexandra Tripp. Megan Tuitt. Who is also absent today, Olivia Young. A little note about Olivia Young. She has beaten the school record for the number of goals in all three seasons. Sarah Zegler.
And Coach Rogers.
What'd I say? Younger girls, Neil in front. Go in the progress.
Congratulations, ladies. I just want to send a, a quick thank you to our coaches and athletes for their commitment to their programs and their desire to be great. Athletes, we look forward to you working hard at the high school level and representing Golden Panther Pride. Thank you again to the Board of Education for your continued support of all of our programs. Thank you.
Just what you're hoping for. All right, we're good? Yeah, alphabetical order, so we're good. Yep. Skipping me. All right, for, for our next recognition, we're going to do something, um, we don't normally do. Usually, we talk about a group, and then we call them up. What I like to do instead is call people up first, so they can receive their certificates, and then I'm going to share a few words about the group, um, which is the Veterans Wall Committee. And then Mr. Senic will take care of calling up, um, our in-kind donors. This way, we can get a really good group picture together. So first off, I'd like to, um, ask the committee members to come up, please. Uh, first off, Mr. Joe Blumer. Ms. Colleen Glenn. Mr. Richard Hazler. Mrs. Sue Hellier. Mr. David Cole. Mrs. Colleen McMahon. Mr. Frank Messineau. Mr. Brian Senic. You have to shake Sam's hand. Mrs. Kathy Scrabala. Mr. Gene Spillane. And Mr. Jim Van Dyke. The outcome of the Paquonic Township High School Veterans Wall Committee's work is nothing short of astonishing. Comprised of people from a wide range of backgrounds, this group came together for one unifying mission, to construct the most outstanding monument to our school district's appreciation of our veterans. Mission accomplished. Our experiences collectively in the fields of architecture, public service, board stewardship, school leadership, as Gold Star family members, as veterans, as an accountant, as remarkable fundraisers, as school leaders, as engineers, as social media site hosts, and more, and so much more, combined with an incredible sense of community, helped this group accomplish in less than a year what I really thought was going to take at least three years, if not more. It's true. I'm not going to explain our process or our roles, as most of that is outlined in the video from yesterday's dedication, which is actually now up on our district website. What I will tell you is that the people we are honoring tonight deserve our appreciation and respect for their work in taking an ambitious idea and making it a reality that is more beautiful than I can adequately express to you. I participated in the planning and observed the process of construction with incredible pride. But I saw yesterday how much this project means to our community, and it goes beyond pride. It's something more than that and will be for a very long time, and your work made it happen. Thank you.
Okay, so just as the committee members were honored, we'd like to honor the contractors and in-kind donors that gave their labor, gave their time, gave materials, expertise, craftsmanship to make this job a reality. So I don't know if you're all here, so I'm gonna just call out the names. First is Vincentello from Freedom Fence. Next is Dimitro Carbon from Morris Bergen Irrigation. So just to give you a little bit of background, uh, Freedom Fence replaced the fence behind the dumpsters. So that way, when we have this beautiful monument that we've built, we don't look and see an old chain-link fence that distracts from it. So Vince came, put up a great new fence, uh, and then Dimitro put up or installed the irrigation system that was used to irrigate the grass that basically grew in like two weeks and, you know, had everyone questioning physics. So, uh, his irrigation system, which now is going to be functional for the rest of the life of the school, is a really great thing. That's right. That's why the reservoir is empty. Uh, Steve Cunningham from STC Electric. And Steve Cunningham is the person that installed the lighting fixtures that are recessed into the ground that shine up on the walls, also on the flag, and then also on the school wall to illuminate the plaque. Uh, Mark DeWinsky from Wayne Electrical Supply. And Mark is the person that donated those light fixtures that Steve installed, so, thank you. Ben Grace from B&amp;B Sustainable Landscape and Irrigation. Ben's company installed all of the landscaping and did all the seed work around to make the, the project really finished at the end. And on top of that, they worked with the nursery to get all of the plantings donated for us, so great job by Ben. Peter Grimbalis, who I think is here. Pete's not here. All right, well, he owns a company, Passay County Welders in Wayne. And Pete has a fabrication shop where they make custom fabricated metal items. And Pete fabricated and designed the bench that's around the flagpole. Um, I went to Pete's shop one day to see it being made and to see his capability. Unbelievable what he can make out of that plant, and I think you could tell by looking at what's out there. He has some great craftsmanship, and the product came out as really high quality. So thank you, Pete. John Lynch from Solomon Concrete, uh, Solomone Concrete. John provided all the ready-mixed concrete for all the walkways, so without that, we're not building anything, so thank you, John. This one's a favorite. Don Semerero from Frank Semerero Construction. Come on down. So every project has a person that holds it together like glue, and that's Don. There is an art from taking something that's laid out on a drawing and might not work entirely the way that it's intended to, and then having somebody interpret it and translate it into something that's now 3D and tangible that you can actually build. And Don was able to do that with our layout and, uh, tweak things just enough so the finished product, the way the walkways come together into the center, and the whole, uh, project overall came out perfect. Another thing, Don's the owner of his company. Don was on the job, like, on our job, like, every day. So think about that time that he's spending here, that he would be spending with his company, and that goes for all the people that worked on this project. So, Don, thank you. Job doesn't get built without you, and I really appreciate it. Thank you. Jim Spano, Spano and Sons General Contracting. Jim placed the concrete for all the walkways. So all the concrete walkways going from the parking lot to the center, and then also there's concrete underneath the pavers to provide a flat bed. Jim placed that as well, did a very good job. Larry Steimel from LA Design and Construction. So Larry is another one, just like Don. Larry was part of the glue that held the job together. Larry built the walls that the plaques hang on. He built them out of CMU block, and then after he was finished with that, Larry put up the stucco coating, that is the finish coating on the outside of the walls. And in addition, Larry helped us solve a problem with getting the wall caps. We're doing the job, you always run into some kind of problem. So we had a problem where we didn't know how we were going to finish the top of the wall because we had a constrained amount of time, and we had to be able to get material in place to be able to finish before school started. Larry was able to hook us up with a vendor to get the product that is the wall cap outside now that looks great and was due on schedule, and then he installed it like right up to the last day. So again, without Larry, job doesn't get built. Thank you, Larry. And then last but not least, Elvis Dusenovich from Green Nature Landscaping. And Elvis was the one that installed all the pavers in the center of that walkway. And he also spoke with his vendors and got the pavers donated, so that way the committee didn't have to pay a thing for him. So Elvis, thank you very much. All of you did a phenomenal job, and it's something that, if you're a part of a lot of projects in your life, as I've been, a lot of construction projects, there's always things that come up where like people are arguing over whose work is this and whose work is that. And this was the first construction project I've ever done in my life where everybody was willing to do someone else's scope just because it was the right thing to do. It was like construction happening in church. It was perfect. So, oh, thank you, all of you did a great job. Thank you.
And it wouldn't be right if we didn't recognize Board of Ed President Brian Sennick. Brian, you know, when all of the contractors got together, he said, you know what? He says, this project, he says, we're gonna get it done in three weeks. And I was like, this guy's crazy. There's no way we're gonna get it done in that time. But I tell you what, Brian was the force that kept everyone together, kept every, all the contractors moving along, worked well with them. It was just, like Brian said, it was a group of guys that didn't know each other before they came here, and now they're all buddies, you know? So without Brian and his force and his leadership of getting everyone to work together, we got the project done. I think we started like the second week in July, and we were pretty much 95% done by the end of August, and we wrapped it up right before school started. So Brian, you deserve a lot of the recognition as well.
And last but not least, Dr. Portis and Rich Hasler. Thank you for allowing us to come to the school and do what we were able to get done in a short amount of time, from January really till the final day yesterday. It was an awesome experience. Everyone truly enjoyed themselves. But deep, our deepest thank you because you guys allowed it to happen here. Thank you very much.
And something, just before I officially conclude the superintendent's report and send it over to Mr. Gibbs, there's something too I hope you were able to pick up if you're in the audience or watching, is the genuine care that the people in this group had for one another. We had to work very closely, worked really hard, and we really pushed each other. And there's just so much respect. It was such a meaningful experience. Yesterday was incredible, and I'm just so proud of what's gonna stand in front of our high school for a really long time. And it wouldn't have happened without a lot of people just going the extra mile. So super inspiring, about as impressive a project as you're ever gonna see. And the outcome is just, as I said before, astonishing. So thanks to everybody who was involved and really to everybody who provided support.
Mr. Gibbs, do you have a report?
Yes, good evening. This evening, we have Mrs. Mantell and Mr. Coe, who are certified public accountants with the accounting firm Missavatia LLP. The school's board-approved accounting firm, conducted the school's 2023-2024 audit, and will give an audit presentation as to the results of the audit.
We have a few pages of financial highlights. No, they're not numbered. Goodness. But they are stapled. Anyway, we prepare a few highlights for the board so that you have a general understanding of the important factors of the audit. It's quite extensive and lengthy, and sometimes sounds like a bunch of mumbo jumbo. So we just try to bring it down to, down to earth. So Brian will start. He'll talk about a few things, and then I'll interject.
All right, well, I'm Brian Coe. I'm your audit manager. I've been doing the audit here in Paquonic for six or seven years now. I've been in Missavatia for 14 years. And I'm gonna start with general fund. So that's the top section of the synopsis we have here. So this is the fund balance. This is the funds that are reserved at the end of the year. So between 2023 and 2024, fund balance increased $674,000, sorry, $675,000. The main changes in that are encumbrances were reduced by $435,000. Capital reserve increased by $1 million. Current year excess surplus decreased by $326 million. Sorry, $1 million, yes, $1,000. The budgeted succeeding year, the assigned amount for additional appropriations increased by $229,000. And then unassigned, which is the only unrestricted reserves you have there, increased by $120,000, which is broken up between X aid and your unassigned 2% maximum, which is 2% of your total expenditures. Our total change is $675,000. So the section below that goes into what makes up that $675,000. I won't go into detail on that, but the, just a thing of note is that the budgeted fund balance of $4 million is offset by the unexpendited appropriations of $3.3 million. So it's not that you had all these funds left over. It's that those funds were offset by what was used from last year's or the previous year's funds. Your total fund balance budgeted, you can see at the bottom there, is, we had a little bump in '24-'25. We're going to $4.3 million. But our projected for '25-'26 is going to be $3.8 million of budgeted funds used.
Anyway, I will interject at this point. And so one of the biggest thrusts to creating the fund balance that you use each year is the unexpendited balance of the budget. And I've seen in the last four years of the pandemic that that's, even though those federal funds were available, inflation and costs were going up in excess of that. So Paquonic is just another one, you know, another school district who's trying to manage with less money and more expenses. So not trying to draw any scariness there or anything, but it really is going to be challenging. And I know we've had conversations with Gordon. We don't prepare your budget. We don't, you know, analyze it to make sure that it's sufficient. But we've talked to many, many school districts. We represent about 90 schools. Everyone's going through the same challenge, and that is contracts are being awarded beyond the 2%. And you're just trying to figure out how you're gonna move into, I think, '25-'26 will be okay, but you're gonna feel it. And again, we are a resource for any kind of overview of how the district can manage that. So with that, I'll let Brian talk about the changes in reserves.
Yeah, so on the second page of that synopsis there, in the middle, I'm just gonna go over the capital reserve there, since maintenance reserve only changed by interest. So we started the year with $4.8 million, had a little bit of interest allocated. But then we had transfers from the Capital Projects Fund. So this is funds that were unspent in Fund 30 from old SDA grants. We found out how much we were actually gonna get from the SDA finally for those receivables we had booked from years and years ago. And we were able to cancel those unexpendited balances and send them back to capital reserve. And thankfully, that offset the budget withdrawal amounts, and we were able to increase your capital reserve balance there. Just a memo note, though, that the, there are budget withdrawals in the '24-'25 year to reduce the capital and maintenance reserves there. So all in all, in Fund 30, we are going to receive about $1.7 million by the end of the year in SDA grant receivables. Now, that's not a windfall. It's been booked for a long, long time, but the receivables haven't booked, but the funds are finally coming in. The difference is that $1.675 that was allowed to be transferred back to capital reserve there. All right, and then on the third page, we just had a little comparison for your food service fund. And total net position decreased slightly by $20,000. Just a note that the general fund does fund the food service a little bit every year. The amount decreased this year, which is why the total fund balance decreased as well. Long-term liabilities, all those decreased during the year. We didn't have any new issuances. Even your net pension liability, which is created by the state, that even decreased. But those are actuarially created numbers, which don't really reflect any current liability for you. It's just a number that we're required to disclose in your audit. Once again, we'd like to congratulate Mr. Gibbs and his team. We have no audit recommendations. You and your team do such a fine job and are a pleasure to work with. We appreciate you being patient with us. We know that the auditors are not everybody's favorite people, and we come and disrupt you for two weeks at a time. But we thank you for your patience and understanding and being supportive of us while we're there.
Thank you. You do a great job.
Thank you.
So I've had this conversation over and over. But it really does need to be emphasized that for years, we haven't had audit recommendations here. And that's because with every business administrator that you have running the business office, they have the concern and care to do things and do things right. So again, I think it is such a wonderful thing that you have people that care so much to do the right thing. So when we talk about finances, like I said, it's statewide, that people are gonna have a little bit of a challenge. And I think with that, to know that you're a well-run district, that you adhere to policies, procedures, you have some of the best, I think that that's wonderful. Now, Brian did go over something quickly, and that was the funds that are, that the general fund sends over to the cafeteria. It was a little bit short at the end of the year, so it was like $7,000 or $8,000, not a big deal. So we did put a management suggestion in there to keep an eye on it. And the two other management suggestions that we make, we put in every single school district report, and that is with the wind down of the COVID-19 grants, which the expiration period, the last one, was September 30th. I think you actually get a little bit of time to liquidate those orders. But that's coming to an end, and we do have clients who have been monitored, and they've had some issues with it, and they're silly issues. They're, you know, they, they did everything they could do. They developed the budget with the grantor, and then at the end of the day, I believe the state has hired a firm to come do those monitoring reports, and that firm cannot answer on them. They have to get the answer from the Department of Fed. But I know in the last three weeks, I've seen two of my own clients have issues with things that were in the budget. They were approved. And we're hoping that everything goes through and that they are approved, and none of the funds have to be returned. So again, I feel confident that that would be the same in Paquonic. But we have said year after year that when we do a single audit, federal and state funds, that the compliance supplements that we need to follow are a lot less intense than monitoring. Because once monitoring, it's, you know, with a much bigger emphasis than what we do. So Brian, anything further?
Yeah, so just to reiterate, not that we found anything in our single audits on those COVID grants. We just mentioned those suggestions to everyone because it's what we've been seeing coming up in those collaborative monitoring reports that the feds have been doing. So just to keep an eye out on those items.
Always be dotting your i's and crossing your t's, and I think that that has been done. And congratulations, because I've been here the whole time, that those SDA grants have been out there, and it really is a success story to finally be finished. So very excited. Gordon and Brian were both happy to get those closed up, out, and off the books. So congratulations.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for the orders? No?
Well, just a reminder, we're here all year long. We're not just here during audit time. So if you have any questions throughout the year, you can contact us or let Gordon know, and he can contact us. And we're here to support you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to give a special thank you to my staff who do an outstanding job. Jackie Mazzaro, Loretta Cruz, Margaret Calipio, and Yvette Fuentes. They are fantastic team, and I really appreciate them. So I just want them, if they're listening, to say thank you.
I do have a question. Is it a law or a rule that we have to get the books themselves?
No, it is definitely not.
I myself would much rather a 6,000-page PDF.
You get the PDF too, brother.
Yeah, but, I mean, you know, these are probably like 80 bucks a pop. I'd like to save the money on them, if possible.
I agree.
Okay.
So you know what? For next year, Gordon can get a count of however many books you all want or don't want, and we'll just update it.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, that brings us to approval of the minutes, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Esposito to move the minutes.
I'd like to move the minutes from October 28th, 2024, and November 4th, 2024.
Second. Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes, I'm giving Mr. Gittin a minute to get back to his seat.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gittin?
Abstained at 10:28. Yes, to the morning.
Mr. McSweeney?
Abstained.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Ms. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito? Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. They may speak on any agenda item only during that time. And if a member of the public has a question, direct it to the board president and state your name and sign in before you begin.
Anyone know where Mr. Nacian is?
All right, seeing no one, I'm going to move on to approval of the action items. Up first is PMC, and that's our very own Prince of Quonic, Mr. Sam Cerisi. I'm going to ask Mr. Cerisi to please move PMC.
Oh, my gosh, the prince. I got my Paquonic originals, sixty-seven shirt on tonight. All right. So I would like to move PMC ninety-six, ninety-six dash twenty-five through PMC one oh five dash twenty-five.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chanton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to CIS, and I'm going to ask Mr. McSweeney to please move the items under CIS.
Yes, I'd like to move CIS forty dash twenty-five through CIS forty-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
Any question or discussion?
Yes, I just have a quick question. I just wanted to clarify with Dr. Portas. I see that we're doing, that there's a request for professional development with Strong and Associates. I just want to clarify, are we switching to Strong? Because last, I thought that something that we spoke about, that the current method of what's the word I'm looking for? Evaluation, thank you, was Danielson. Within the district.
Yep, we are, we are still using the Danielson model for evaluations for staff members who are not administrators. And the administrative team is using really a hybrid of the Marshall Plan with, which is integrated with elements of the state's model. But that said, we had started last year looking into piloting the Strong, which we found might be more efficient and possibly more effective in providing feedback to our staff. So we have a few staff members who are willing to participate in the pilot, as well as a few administrators who are likewise interested in doing the same. So we found some professional development that we could get straight from the Strong group that would help us to, to begin sampling the program with fidelity. Ms. Manscol, I don't know if you had anything you want to add to. I know you inherited this one, but I don't want to add anything.
I did inherit. So this is going to be to train the administrators. There's six administrators that are going to look at it. That'll be in January. We'll, we'll get the training. We have about ten teachers who we're going to train and talk about how this could roll out. And then next year would be the pilot for about those ten to fifteen teachers. So it's, it's kind of a several step process.
Is this just the district, district finds it'll be more effective? More effective than Danielson at this point?
That's what we're hoping to find out. We've been using Danielson for a little more than ten years now. And I, I find that it is useful. I've never used Strong, so I'm interested in getting some feedback about it. Actually was, back to two thousand twelve, I was trained in the Strong model in a different district, but I've never implemented it. So I'm curious to see how our staff members feel about the feedback they get. They feel like it provides an accurate summation of what takes place during their lessons. And also for the administrators, if they find it is an efficient tool, because sometimes Danielson can get bogged down in some of the details. Yeah, so we're, we're, we're open to trying new things. You know, if we do decide to stick with Danielson, we want to make sure it's a mindful decision. If we do switch to Strong, likewise, we want to make sure that it's done with a very sequenced series of events that give us feedback that we can then use and apply. Yeah, we'll, we'll see what the outcome is, but this, this won't happen with any degree of urgency. This is going to take place over at, at least two years and probably more.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm interested to hear how, what the feedback is.
Anybody else? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chanton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, if next is FFA, I'm going to ask Mr. Blumberg to move FFA. And I want to just point out that FFA item fifty-seven, twenty-five, if you're receiving reimbursement for school boards, you should abstain from that item if it pertains to you.
I'd like to make a motion to move FFA fifty-six dash twenty-five to FFA sixty-five dash twenty-five.
Second. Question or discussion?
Yeah, real quick. Um, so I know, I see we're renewing Kelly's services. And I know obviously, the numbers used to matter more when we were closer to COVID, but fill rates and things like that, are they meeting expectations?
Yeah, we're, we're happy with the, certainly with the fill rates. We haven't seen as great a need as what we saw during COVID. And that was hopefully an anomaly that will never repeat itself. But Kelly's proven to be an effective partner. They've helped us fill a lot of aid slots. And the substitute teaching pool has definitely helped us as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Did somebody second that? Tended, all right, getting second. Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumberg?
Yes, to all except for fifty, FFA fifty-seven dash twenty-five where it pertains to me.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes, to all, except for I'd like to abstain on FFA fifty-seven dash twenty-five where it pertains to me.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chanton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Uh, yes, except for FFA fifty-seven, twenty-five, as it, as it obtain, as it applies to me.
Motion carries.
Big word.
Okay. I'd like to take a moment just to thank the PTHS Association of Music Parents for their generous donations. There's a definitely a big one there with the bill props, fifty-four hundred dollars.
All right, up next is policy. I'd like to ask Ms. Dempsey to please move the item under policy.
Motion to approve P zero six dash twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
Blumberg, second. Question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chanton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. And this time, a member of the public may speak for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock on any topic they would like to during that five minutes. If a member of the public raises a question, please direct it to the board president, state your name, and sign in before you begin. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to unfinished business. And we have one item, policy thirteen thirty-one, evaluation of the board secretary.
Thank you. So this came up under the policy workshop discussion at the last meeting. And we kind of left that meeting with a sense of combining the evaluation of the board administrator with the evaluation of the board secretary policy instead of having two separate ones and starting to draft that. Dr. Portis started leaning towards keeping two separate policies. So I just wanted to bring it back again and give Dr. Portis a chance to talk a little to that and see where we want to go before bringing it for any kind of a reading.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. And admittedly, I'm fine with whether we combine or keep them separate. And this is something that is true board business, as you are the policy setters, and we will follow it. One, one recommendation I had about keeping the, the evaluation of the board secretary is it is clearly defined as being something that is a board evaluation. Where policy thirteen thirty is, it's my work. And then I put something to back up that does note that the evaluation that the board provides of the board secretary, I rest the same person as the business administrator, will get melded into a single evaluation that I, I will provide. But it will be noted that this portion comes from the board.
So we would complete our evaluation, transfer it to you, you would aggregate it with yours and then provide it to the person?
Correct. And, and it's important to note too, that both parts are entirely narrative. So you would give a summary, you would get, you would get feedback from Gordon about what he feels should be represented in it. You could ask questions in that. And it's the one opportunity you have to evaluate somebody other than me. And it, it is covered by policy. So I would then take the summary that, that you, you generate and incorporate that into the business administrator evaluation.
So there is a draft and backup, if you hadn't had a chance to look at it, if you wanted to pull that up, for revisions to thirteen thirty-one, keeping the evaluation of the board secretary as a policy with the addition of a paragraph that when the secretary position is held concurrently with the business administrator, a single evaluation will be submitted by the superintendent and da, da, da. The, the only thing I would, and we removed the sentence about the board consulting with staff members assigned to the board secretary, because that just does not need to be there at all. If we were going to go this route, I would also suggest changing the language that says the procedures for the evaluation shall include things like an in-person meeting and a written evaluation, and maybe change that to may include to just be more aligned with what we're actually doing, which is none of those things currently. And would probably be more conversation between the board members and the superintendent. The one thing, reading it over again, that is nice about having the separate policy is should there ever be an issue at any point in the future, it does include the option for a written plan for performance improvement and growth. We would obviously never need that with Mr. Gibbs, but if the time came in the future when that was necessary, it does allow for that in the existing policy. So I just wanted to again, open it up to discussion to get everybody's sense of that draft versus rolling it all into the one policy.
So I like having the two policies. I also like having things that are defined. And I, I think you're right, Megan, there's really no definition here. It's kind of open-ended. I think maybe if we did, maybe we could incorporate some type of procedure in here. And it doesn't have to be, you know, overly difficult, but just what is the evaluation consists of? And what are the steps that we take? Make it simple so that way, if there's a future board here, they don't have to think of this on their own. They don't have to generate this procedure on their own. It's already there for them.
I'm happy to do this. I, I'm still leaning towards, I don't think it's totally necessary because we have the same position, right? If, if there was an issue that Gordon, as Gordon, as secretary of the board, it's all like it's going to impact his job as school business administrator. So I'm just wondering if like, you know, sometimes we're chasing, racing the clock to get these evaluations done. Now we're adding a piece to it. I'm just saying, be happy to do it, but don't find it overly necessary.
I mean, it is an interesting to think about in context of what we had tonight, because one of the things in there is reference will be made to the report of the auditor. So if there ever were a situation in the future where you had a board, but actually, that would still be board administrator duties, not board secretary, right? I don't know. It's so confusing.
Yeah, oh, that would definitely.
That would be more, if there is an issue with the odd, if things coming out in the audit, that would be in the board administrator.
Yeah, the auditor's not going to come down on him for accurately collecting minutes. It's going to be stuff that's a lot more substantial. If that were to happen, not that it will.
I think the important thing is that if we have a person that's, a position rather, that's under the the supervision of the board, we should have a mechanism in place, whether we use it or not, to evaluate that person. Not that the person's under our supervision and there's no formalized way for us to say they're doing a good job or a bad job. I think if you have things set in stone and defined, it just leads to less problems. And the fact that it's there, and we haven't done it anyway, it really doesn't add any kind of cumbersome anything, because we could just not do it.
I mean, but if we have a policy that says that this needs to be done, then we should be doing it.
Should be doing it.
This should, I mean, this is the first time in my tenure sitting at the board, this has even come up as a thing, which is, this was adopted in two thousand and eight and not looked at since. That makes sense.
That's before me.
But any policy that we, we, we say something, I mean, we should be doing it.
No, I agree. I think we should do it now that we know about it, which is why I'm saying, now that we know about it, let's define it a little bit better and make that procedure up for the people that are going to come before us.
I would like to propose that Megan has to do this before she leaves.
This is me trying to kick it down the road, can't you tell? To the new board member with
And has about the thirteen days.
Other feeling strongly one way or the other, because we now have a split vote between Brian and Joe and which way to go on this.
Yeah, so
Not a vote. It's, I'm just
I know, it's not a vote, but.
So I am all for less is more. I feel like we have so many policies already that we have to review. If this is one less that we can combine by adding a few sentences, that would be my preference. That being said, this is not my hill to die on. If people feel strongly other, the other way, I'm fine with that, too.
I, I think it would, I mean, Dr. Portas, do you think it's valuable for us to provide you some feedback in terms of what we think as a board in regard to somebody that you supervise directly?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we, it's hard for me to say yes, because we, we haven't done it. But, but I think it is, it is, it's useful. And this has been an educational experience for me, because even when we were going through the policies, when I first looked at it, I'm like, wait a minute, they can't evaluate anybody but me. But the reality is, yeah, you can evaluate him for about five percent of what his job is. But I still think if it's, if it's on the books, and if it's something that is a matter of probably statute, we, we should be following it. I mean, obviously, it's, it hasn't gone wrong. That we definitely would have noticed. But yeah, I think getting your input is good. And if, if we have a timeline where April first, we, we start the process of the board soliciting feedback from Gordon, he gets it to you within a week, and then you get a chance to draft something, get it to me by the fifteenth. What's that? Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of like I'm saying, the policy's there for the what-if scenario, not when things are good. The policy's there when things are bad, when we have to have some kind of mechanism to evaluate that person. And if the person turns out to, I don't know, maybe they can't spell and they're doing, I don't know. But we have to have a way to evaluate.
Do they use an unapproved font in the minutes?
Right, right.
Needlessly mispronouncing names.
So I, I think we should have the policy just as a matter of if the person's under our supervision, there should be a mechanism to evaluate them. And that mechanism should be defined by policy.
It could be good if we ever got another person for that job, which I doubt that'll ever happen. It's good to have in the books anyway.
Yeah. And, and what you're, what you're talking about there is, it is planning ahead for a future that ideally is very, very distant, where, yeah, there, there are different people in, in place. And you, you do want to have mechanisms, if you have an ineffective superintendent, if you have an ineffective business, board secretary, or if you have an ineffective board, that you have systems in place to protect the district, should that be the case? Which it won't be.
So this is what I'm going to propose. I think we should find out a little bit more about this as far as what, if there is any statute that surrounds it, we could talk to Jackie, we could talk to Charlene Peterson. So maybe we kick it back to the policy committee or even the board effectiveness committee, policy committee to see whether it's required, board effectiveness committee, where if it is required, then they come up with the procedure. It doesn't have to be overly, you know, difficult, just a couple of questions, sit out a timeframe. I can't see this being a big lift. So that, that's what I'd say we do.
Sounds good.
Yeah. I, I have one other item. I don't know if it qualifies on unfinished business, but I suppose it does. And I haven't even reached out to Ms. Dempsey about it. But earlier today, Mrs. Aug notified me that she found a regulation that we do have on the books, but it was not on the website. And that is regulation twenty-four, twelve R, which is in the subject area of home instruction due to health condition. And we realized when we were looking through it, that it's not on, it was not on the website. It has since been added to the website. So if anybody's going through all the policies and notices, hey, twenty-four, twelve R wasn't there yesterday. It was not, but it was on the books. It just wasn't, had not been added to the website. So it was actually approved back in two thousand and fourteen, should have been on the website since then. That's now been corrected. I, I think that was one. Yeah, I remember you had mentioned something in passing, and I couldn't remember exactly which number. So thank you, Karen.
All right. So just to put a bow on that, Megan, you could look into that with, as one of your final parting gift for us? Okay, any board member with any new business? How about board member announcements?
Uh, yeah, so I, I attended the Morris County ESC meeting on November thirteenth, pretty general board meeting. But near the end, one of the board members asked about board governance committees and a surprising number, I think almost everybody on the, on the, at the meeting. and a surprising number, I think almost everybody on the, on the, at the meeting, their boards had board governance committees. So apparently there might be something coming down from Charlene where they're gonna try to get together, um, called it like a countywide symposium, uh, representatives from each district to talk about their board governance plans, their goals, uh, and, um, what's it look like? So keep an eye out for that, uh, Tim. That was about it.
Anybody else?
Um, so I I wanted to recognize that we are having, we are having a lot of recognitions, which is, I mean, there's a lot going on in this district. It's pretty amazing. Um, the Veterans Wall, I was not able to attend yesterday, and, uh, for personal reasons, but I did watch some of it on the video. It, it's pretty, pretty amazing. Um, I did get to see this happening almost every day from June until September. Diesel and I got to do that together. Uh, I know it's not about Ridgebacks, but, um, you know, we walk past it every day, and we got to see it happening. We got to see the grass growing overnight. Um, it really, it really is an amazing thing, and, um, the one thing I, I really feel is important about it is it's going to be there now, as long as this high school stands, which is pretty cool. Um, one other thing tonight, um, I noticed that the PV soccer team, which is a one-level sport at PV, had more than two dozen players, and, uh, as a former coach, I would like to acknowledge Coach Rogers for taking on that many players on their, on her team, uh, were the betterment of her program. I can't imagine, um, that there's not some mayhem going on every day after school, uh, at PV when the, when soccer practice is trying to get two dozen, uh, kids together, and I know that she has some assistant coaches and stuff, but, um, I think that's pretty impressive for one level to, to do that. So, uh, I just wanted to recognize Coach Rogers for that. And the team, obviously, and cross-country team. Great job.
Uh, so I first would love to talk about, uh, yesterday, um, the Veterans Wall ceremony was an absolutely amazing event. I think there had to be, there had to be seven hundred people here, um, for the viewing of the, uh, helicopter and to see the wall before the ceremony, uh, as well as the, um, uh, military vehicles that were parked out front, and then, um, in Mr. Hazler fashion, he was worried about not enough seats, and he said there was two hundred and fifty seats, and we easily had two hundred plus standing, so there had to be close to five hundred people at the ceremony, and it was just a perfect weather, perfect, amazing event. Um, I want to thank everybody who was part of it, who attended it. Uh, then the, the luncheon was amazing, uh, the, the, everything from the slideshow to the, um, declarations that were provided to the district. Uh, it was just an amazing event. I, I just, I think back the whole thing from beginning to end, I think about the time when Mr. Port- Dr. Portis, you know, called me to say that the STEM class is building out renditions of a proposed Veterans Wall. I said that is the coolest thing I've ever heard, and I remember seeing him like on the computer, on, on just a PowerPoint presentation, and seeing him at the football game, and then COVID hitting, and then here we are today. So that's where I, that take, that's where I really take it all in. Um, my favorite part was watching, you know, the veterans stand by their picture with their families, taking the picture of them. Um, just an absolutely perfect, amazing event, and I want to, you know, again, thank everybody who was part of it. Uh, second, where our last meeting was, uh, what, I think November fourth, which was a day before Election Day. So I just want to take a moment to, uh, congratulate, um, Mr. Senic for, uh, being, um, uh, winning a reelection, and Mrs. Tina Icayo, who will be serving her first term starting January.
And you?
And me.
Sorry, I did attend, um, the Veterans Day as ceremony yesterday. It was absolutely amazing. Um, the wall is just spectacular. Um, so thank you to everybody who put forth effort and really, you know, undertook that project as well as the, um, the donations that, that the district or the, the district received. That was, it's, it is really amazing. Um, it, it really, every time you go past, it's just incredible, and I especially love it at night. Um, so thank you. Thanking Mr. Senic, Dr. Portes, and Mr. Blumberg, who really put a, a huge effort into that. Similarly, congratulations to everyone involved with the Veterans Wall, um, like Mr. Blumberg, I remember going to the football game and seeing the design. So keeping in mind that this was really student-initiated thing by students who probably are not even in the schools anymore, um, it's fabulous to see it to come for, come to fruition, and, um, also, I think it's great seeing so many of the PV recognitions that we've been doing. I think when I started, there was a lot of recognition of, um, our athletes and our scholars and all of our students doing great things at the high school. It's really awesome to see that being filtered down into recognition of, um, PV students and what amazing talent we hopefully have coming into our high school from those groups. Um, I did attend the PV Veterans Day ceremony on Veterans Day, um, and it was fabulous as always, great speakers, beautiful, beautiful weather, sun shining down on the flag. That was amazing to see, um, all of our girls, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, the band, the choir, I'm sorry, the chorus, um, they did an excellent job as always. And I also attended the PV Cafe Night, which was held last Friday, and that had been done in the past, and I think for a couple of years it wasn't. Mrs. Benitez did an amazing job with that. Um, I believe she got a grant from the PTA, and so there were snacks for free. It was a free event. It was really well done. The students put so much work into their performances, um, and it was a lot of fun to see many of them in their elements, so, uh, excellent job to everyone.
And I, I just want to add into, I know I've already spoken quite a bit about the Veterans Wall, but, um, pretty emotional weekend. And just to see how wonderful communities can come together for something that they really value. And, um, Joe spoke about it too, Mr. Blumberg spoke about it too, like seeing the veterans getting their pictures by the wall and showing children and grandchildren their pictures. And, uh, I may, I may have said to a couple of you yesterday that I, I knew this was a big deal, but I don't think I had any idea of how big it really was. And, uh, it's, it is the only time in my professional career I've ever gotten chills while addressing a crowd, um, because it just, you, you just felt it. It was, it was really spectacular, and I re- I really appreciate that News Twelve interviewed me at the one point in my life when I really was incapable of speaking, because I, I was so overcome with things. So if you happen to tune into News Twelve, and you're like, who's that babbling guy? That, that's me, but the mo- the moment was certainly bigger than I was, um, and it's gonna, that thing's gonna be up there for a long time. I was realizing the children who aren't born yet, we're gonna be on that wall, we're gonna be showing their family, so there, there, there's a lot going on there, so really impressive. Thank you to just the collective, everyone.
All right, I got two things. Uh, first is this Thursday, uh, seven to nine, in the main gym, we're hosting the Brooklyn Wheelchair Nets again for basketball game. The game's to raise money for mental health awareness, and hopefully we can help our self-esteem a little bit by actually giving them a game this year. I doubt that, but we could always try. Uh, and then last, I just want to say congratulations to Ms. Icayo and Mr. Blumberg for winning, uh, Mr. Blumberg reelection, and Ms. Icayo for her first term. And, uh, I want to thank everyone that voted. Okay, that brings us to our consideration for executive session, and we do have reason to, to go into executive session tonight, where we will discuss student matters. No action will be taken, and we will adjourn from there. Our next meeting will be December sixteenth here at the high school, and that will be our last meeting of the year. Can't believe how fast it went. Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone.